Alright, I guess we're alive? It is that time? That'll be the order, or a cup. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To your mother, who is your stance, one issue, round your bell, individual liberty, justice for all.
Next up is approval of the minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
Actually, there's a correction.
Okay.
Uh, last page. Under other business. I suggested the potential of exploring the student representative.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
So, so.
Fine, well, well, I'd love to say this one was probably more interesting. Have a good night.
Thank you. Alright. Do we have a motion with that correction?
So good.
We have a second? Uh, any other discussion, corrections, or otherwise? There are none, all favorable approving of the minutes as presented, or corrected. Any? Alright, uh, next up is approval in the role of accounts dated September fifth, twenty twenty-four, and the amount of four hundred ninety thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. And dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and five cents. Do we have a motion to approve those roles? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any questions or discussions? Hearing now to all of favor approving those roles as presented. Yeah, these units. Report of committees, do we have any committee reports? Probably not, too many committees going on right now.
Yeah.
There will be, there will be one, uh, for the next meeting, the adult ed committee.
Okay.
And, for kind of committee duty.
Yep.
And policy.
Yeah.
What is?
For, is there a date on it?
Seventeen.
Always on.
I think it's the seventeenth.
Alright, well, you can give that to me, you know, just make sure I have.
Yes.
Confirm that.
Yep. I'll send you all the.
I probably have it, but.
Well, I can send you all the sheet, enough the days for all of them for the whole school year.
Yeah, alright.
I'll get it to you.
Um, alright, committee reports, so administrator's report, we'll start with. Thank you, messing up my order. Nope, nope, elementary school as far as you're right.
Good evening. Um, I wasn't here last time, it's probably what threw you off because the first thing on my list is our open house. So we had our open house, this thing is our last board meeting, and this video were there, saw how busy it was, we did a great turnout. Um, so it's always nice to do that right before school starts, so that our kids get an opportunity to meet the kids and vice versa, and teachers, kids. Um, so the second thing is, our teachers have, uh, started off the school year making positive phone calls home. They're working through their home room lists and their class lists to make those initial beginning of the connections with families. Our fall drama performance, auditions have already, uh, taken place and that practice has begun. And this year it will be Willie Monka Junior, oh, yes. I'm pretty excited about that. Uh, our enrollment is up. So we ended last year, uh, at five hundred and fifty-two students. And, um, I, the most updated numbers are five hundred and eighty-six students, which is an increase of thirty-four students than we ended last year with, so that's pretty exciting. Um, and the last thing is, um, just wanted to say that the first, uh, late start of the year was, um, very much appreciated. It was the first time that I can remember in a long time, if not in my entire tenure, where everybody in the building was able to be at the same place at the same time. So we took that opportunity to, um, work through, um, things related to behavior and interventions and protocols and things of that nature, and really be able to have some, you know, conversations about all of that, which is really important, especially at the beginning. We're here to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, and so we have plans, um, throughout the year to, again, be able to be in the same place at the same time. So thank you for supporting that, because, um, it worked out really well that, that day for us to be able to have those conversations. I think that's all I have for you. Sorry, that was very fast.
Question?
Yes.
The increase in students, is that any particular cohort, or is that across the board?
No, it really has been, um, across the building. Um, so we, our largest grade right now is sixth grade. We did get a pretty big influx of sixth graders. Um, but for the most part, it really has been spread out. I think it was, uh, perhaps second grade got like one or two new kids, but in sixth grade got like six or seven new kids. Um, but it wasn't just that, um, like, for example, our kindergarten is around seventy-two, which is around the same as it was last year. So it's not as if that number was significantly larger than over the last couple of years. But we just have gotten more from a variety of places and grades, so.
It's like six percent, so that's a pretty good number.
It's two classrooms full of children, more than we had last year, really.
There's only the ash part out amongst the ones you've got.
There we are, technically, yes, but, yeah.
They will be built extra rooms.
Yes. Thank you.
Very good.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'd like to echo Erica as well, so our open house went extremely well. We tried to stagger this year a little bit, because our small confined space last year was, um, chaos. Um, it's just a good night, and you, when you reflect to look back at your first anything, those, it's, it's brand new for the kids, for the families to come from the elementary to this, ah, junior high, this place looks so epically big. Um, next week marks progress reports, so those will be sent home. Uh, marks the halfway point for our, our quarter, which is exciting, uh, in many regards, to do, um, some interventions with academics, behavior, uh, and other. We'll have parent teacher conferences coming up, October ninth and tenth, from three to six P M. on both evenings. Uh, again, another opportunity for families to, uh, meet and greet teachers. Uh, a link will be sent home, and I've got a robocall going out this week, uh, for signups to register for the parent teacher conferences. Uh, our nursing staff wanted me to note that we're having a dental clinic, and we added a day this year. So we typically do two days, um, I think seven through twelve, we've added an extra day because of the, the high need and demand to service our, our families, which is excellent. We implemented an Orange Pass, electronic pass system this year at the junior high, um, and the high schools using it as well. It has gone, two thumbs up. It tracks when students sign up to use restrooms, nurse, guidance, et cetera. Uh, it keeps statistics and data for us, how long students are missing. Um, so when parent calls me and says, why is my kid failing English? I can respond back, well, your child is, you know, X amount of time, period one, in the bathroom, or nurse, or guidance. So it's been really good. Uh, most importantly, we can red flag students that are in high need of mental health. So if they are leaving, uh, a space and want, you know, try to go missing. Um, so it's just got a lot of good features that we're still trying to learn and navigate, but it's been, uh, very, very, um, positive reviews so far. I'd also like to thank you for our in-service, uh, it seemed to be well received from the staff. Um, it was excellent, there's a lot of energy, work, uh, when we've had it at the end of the day, I feel like we're always putting out flyers at the end of the day with, with students, families, staff, et cetera, so to kick off the morning, um, it, it seemed to be really positive. Uh, we focused on Proctor training, which is our main three-year testing, which is coming up October first and October eighth. So there is a training that the state requires, uh, that we give, so we spent a little time on that. Uh, and in the remaining time, we worked on our department goals, which will be presented to you, uh, in the upcoming months, um, with reading, math, attendance, and behavior. So it's kind of like the SMART goals, you know? Um, so we didn't have enough time, we stopped short, we have another one upcoming that will work on those goals. And I think I already said this, but our, yeah, our state testing is coming up very soon, in just a few weeks. So I'm gonna put a lot of things out to parents. We're trying to really make this, the, the testing culture, I think we stepped in the right direction last year with our culture. Uh, this year at our first assembly, I mentioned, we wanted to beat the surrounding schools and the seventh graders, like, we're all cheering in the auditorium, and I'm like, this is awesome. Um, so I'm trying to make it that competitive spirit. So, off to a good start so far. Any questions, comments?
How are teachers finding signing out students with that electric pass system? Because if it's the one that we've looked at, the teacher has to verify it either from their platform or use the students' platforms, and causing a break in its teacher's ability to maintain a lesson flow?
So at our level, we, uh, the teacher does it, we don't allow the kids to, to create it for a number of reasons, just, maybe we may at some point. Uh, it's gone better now that we have an alert system, so as long as your tab is on a certain screen, it'll alert you. So I could be in the office, uh, talking, and my laptop could ding, indicating someone is coming. So that was troubleshooting, the sound was one thing we had to figure. Um, we auto-approved the passes as of right now, which means it's, it's a preset for, for staff, and you can change that. You can limit the number of passes, so there's a few things we need to troubleshoot, but, um.
So the student basically raises the hand, says, hey, I have to.
They still ask for permission, correct?
The teacher has to go in, go in and say.
They'll leave the tab open, so if they're teaching, they just go over and click. You hit create pass, and then, yeah. Um, it's not a perfect system, but I'm not sure the hard copy passes were a perfect system either. And with this way, it at least tracks a lot of data. It creates buddies, which I find is super helpful, you know, hey, um, are all you're in the bathroom at the same time? Joel is pretty much every day, so it'll statistically create this algorithm.
Yeah.
Um, that's been helpful. No, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not in the bathroom, you know, that whole argument, you know? Take a look at this, it, you know, twenty-six minutes on Tuesday. Um, yeah, so there's some, there's definitely some flaws in it, but I, I, I think it's working well at our, our level so far. Keep trying to improve and make it better, but. Like I said, just for the accountability piece, knowing where kids are at, there's just so many nicks and crannies, and, uh, but, you know, we keep talking about mental health, there's a lot of kids that are already returning from, um, you know, for various reasons. It's just not a good space, just to know where they are all the time, for their sake and our sake.
A quick question for all of you guys, have you had a lot of parental feedback from that early or late start?
I have not, because I haven't yet had to make the calls to say, look, your, your child's missing a lot of class time, because it's, you know, it's not.
No, for that, for the late start, sorry.
Sorry.
No, that's right.
I thought you're going to the passes still. We have not. I haven't.
No. Just curious, I, I've had some people say.
If we have, my secretary has it related to me, she was the one that takes the call, no, I haven't.
I've heard a lot from younger students' parents, junior highs are pretty much on their own at that age, but I had a lot of.
Elementary.
Flack from elementary and special, special ed students that are struggling, so, which I expected anyways.
I was just curious.
I have a question about on the passes, the bathroom passes, how are the students, I just wonder how it's being presented? Because I know in talking to Bella, she's very understanding, my daughter's in the high school. And she's like, well, it just feels like, you know, we're being like micromanaged, which in any setting, however, she then also said, but I totally get it. And it's because they're kind of, you know, you have people that leave, and so I think that some students understand the reasoning behind it. But are you getting like, oh, this is where, you know, being micromanaged?
Yeah, a little bit, I want to clear.
And she mentioned something about sometimes it goes down, or it's going down a lot at the beginning, which was like frustrating to everybody, but has that, have you figured that out?
We have to be fresh, we, we did get that a lot at the beginning. I think for our level, they did, middle school kids complain about a lot, as you might know.
Michael said nothing.
He just said nothing. Uh, and I just want to be clear, it's not too, it's not where, that we're saying you can't leave, I mean, kids.
Right, I just wonder what, how you presented it to them, how it's.
What we've noticed to, to date is there's less traffic in the halls. I think it's, ah, now I've got to ask for permission, and now they're gonna track it, so are we micromanaging a little bit more? Probably, but I think it's a good thing, because a lot of our kids just want to take their need to go.
And they're handling it well and understanding. Yeah.
I mean, we have fifty-seven minute classes, so we're not asking you to sit for a major length of time. So, yeah, I think it's been pretty good so far.
Good.
Thank you.
Good evening, um, just a couple of announcements from the high school. Uh, today was our first student of the month assembly, where we recognized, uh, student from each grade for the, the start of the school year up to this point. Uh, set the bar pretty high, starting out in grade nine with Belinda Barnum being selected. In grade ten was Brianna Spalding. Grade eleven, Sam Vingue, and grade twelve was Kyrie Meek, so certainly deserving students there. Uh, as you probably know, last week was homecoming. We had a spirit week throughout the week with different teams each day, students stressing various, you know, things, depending on what of the day was. Um, Friday, we ended the school week with a pep rally at the end of the day, where all the, uh, teams and clubs and organizations were recognized in front of their peers in school, different, you know, dances, skits, band, all that business going on. So it was a good way to wrap up the day, and then we had the bonfire on Friday night, which, if you were there, you saw there was pretty well attended by a lot. Yeah, all of us from elementary, junior high, high school, and just community members out and about. So that was great. Uh, Saturday was real busy with the athletics, a lot of teams playing here on campus and over at K S B. And then, uh, Saturday night, we had the first dance of the year, the homecoming dance from eight to eleven. And of the dances I've done at the high school, I mean, I'll have all the numbers from everyone, but I don't remember when that was as well attended as this particular one was. I think there were three hundred and twenty-ish, three hundred and twenty-three people attended. So, the freshman class is fundraiser, you know, it's a pretty good way to start the year off right there, that raised some money for them, so. Um, looking forward to having those numbers throughout, but it was a great week, and, uh, we had good weather for it, so that was that. Any questions? Perfect.
Thank you.
So, and I will say, no, I'm just a good man's here, but, uh, you know, you get to see that proud dad moment as, as a principal, when her daughter's up there singing, and, you know, the little groupies in the bands in front of it, from the little kids to, you know, her peers. It was really cool, really cool. And I did take a couple pictures, I'm gonna send you in there, but, um, really awesome, and thankfully, homecoming's once a year, um, because it's a long weekend, but what a great display of our community. Uh, we have a new teacher to us that has taught in different schools, and at the pep rally on Friday, she goes, this is amazing. She goes, I have never seen a homecoming pep rally at a school that was inclusive, included everybody. Um, the kids were all into it, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'll, I will update you about the cell phone thing, because you want to talk about really unpopular principal decisions, and we talked about this at the last board meeting. But to tell everybody we're taking away phones, and then we're gonna do the pass system, yeah, not really popular, I do understand that, but it's gone extremely well, and it's gone well because our kids are awesome.
And teachers.
Our faculty members are holding the line. Um, you know, I made a, or actually had Mr. Goldsmith, because he was emceeing the pep rally. Just a quick reminder, don't be on your phones, just support, support each other and have fun. And if you looked around, you know, there were kids who would ask permission, hey, can I record my friends doing this dance right now? It's like, absolutely, you know what I mean? So it was really cool, but the kids were engaged and they were enjoying it. Um, you know, we've had a few students have some reminders, and we're documenting those. I think we've had twenty-six students who have had that first violation, and I'm telling you, the first violation, we have a conversation, this is our expectation, this is what we want to do, you know, we're not gonna keep your phone overnight, which some kids think like, you're gonna keep my phone overnight? No, I don't want to keep your phone overnight, because I don't want to fight with you or your parents about that. Like, here's what it means, right? You're gonna leave it in the office during the day, if this happens again, you're gonna get detention. And we said, I think, we had two students who have gone to level two. Um, and one of those students like, can I just leave my phone in the office in the day? Because I really don't want to get a trouble anymore, you know what I mean? It's, and they're engaged, you see kids having conversations with each other. You see kids checking out books, because they're like, well, I can't be on my phone during study also, I might as well take them out of book. Like, our kids have responded really well, and when I explained to them why we went down this road and how it could have been worse, right? I said, it could have been a school board decision, I don't want school board making decisions for us, you guys don't want that, you guys are responsible. I knew you can be responsible, so this is our way of having a compromise, where you can still have it at lunch, you can have it in between classes. You know, we're not taking up, I had one parent call, and she's like, so you sent out a message yesterday? And I said, yeah, and I'm like, expecting, okay, which way are we going, are we going, you support me and you think I'm smart, or you think this was the dumbest idea ever? And she goes, so do they have to turn it into you every day? And I'm like, no, I don't want to collect four hundred cell phones every day, like, no. And I talked about other schools and what they're doing with the bags and their, it's like, we're not going that route, you know?
Well, I heard, like, each teacher has a different, when you come into the classroom, some have a basket, and everybody puts their phone in a basket, and others have, there's different.
Right.
But it's a very, I don't know, gentle, soft feeling.
Well, I bought, right here, I bought this for, I think I bought forty of these things, they're little charging stations. I mean, if the teacher wanted it, I know as a teacher, I would just say.
Yeah, they'll charge it.
Right, if you, if you're charging it, you're not gonna be on it, right?
You can see it, it's right there.
Right.
And what a great thing, and hopefully, you know, as they grow into adults, that it's like, oh, it's dinner time, let's all throw our phones in the basket, or it's just seeing that as something to do is good.
Absolutely.
The ones that have, just to be real quick here, ones that have, but it's not like they're in the middle of the class on it, I'm not, you know, it's usually just a bonehead thing, go to the bathroom or something, and like, it's with, you know, or a couple seconds before, you know, I mean, the.
Minor.
Minor, it's not in class on it, like.
Kids walking out the hallway, there may or may not be a kid that's related to me that I got this phone the other day, as.
And thanks for making us the best.
May or may not. I didn't say it was, but, yeah, it's, our kids are awesome. I, I say this all the time, that it is almost coming, becoming cliche, but really, we have great kids. Three hundred and twenty-three kids showed up to a dance in a school that's three ninety, I think is what our, I mean, that speaks volumes to the support of our school, you know, every game that you went to, I mean, it was packed. I mean, the community supports our kids because we have great kids. So, alright, with that being said, um, the cell phone thing is going really well, uh, because of that. Um, I did talk a little bit, uh, at the last board meeting about the supports that we were putting in place for vaping, um, to support kids and families that need that extra support. So, really quick, uh, at, uh, parent teacher conferences, we're gonna have them back, but at open house, um, we're partnering with Maine General and their, uh, I think the group that they are, but it's a substance abuse prevention, uh, group that they have. They came in and they set up one of the classrooms as a bedroom for parents to come in, and all they did was, hey, what do you notice in this bedroom? What do you notice that may be either vaping or drug-related paraphernalia? And so as, you know, parents go around, they're like, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but you missed this. Oh, uh, you missed this one over here. And so it really, it educated me as not just a parent, but as a principal as well, some of the things that kids may have. Some of them I've seen through my research and things, but I did pick up on a few things. They're gonna come back, parent teacher conferences, and do the same thing on those two nights for both junior high and high school families to go through. Which, um, I encourage everybody to go through it, uh, even if you don't think your kids may even go through it, because it may be eye-opening of what, um, kids are involved in, um, or what, what's out there. Um, they came the first day with our freshmen, and they did a presentation with just the freshmen on the dangers of vaping. Then I had them back the following week, and they did it with the sophomores, the juniors, and the seniors. Um, we're also partnering with them, uh, we have somebody who's dedicating four hours a week to Winslow High School, just Winslow High School, that if we catch a student vaping, we used to have something to reduce their suspension called vape educate, which was an online, um, thing, uh, on the computer. You have a kid who's suspended doing that on their own, their parents are probably at work, what are they taking away from a four-hour online program? Probably not a whole one, right? Unless the parent's sitting down and having that conversation. They're doing something to replace it, and it's in person, and it's gonna last over the course of a month, once a week, over the course of a month, one hour at a time, where they can develop a relationship with somebody, and it's somebody who can provide that support. Talk about goal setting, not just saying vaping's bad, don't do it, but really talk about what are some things out there. For students who need a little bit more support, uh, we've partnered with K D H, and they're doing a program. And I'm working together, um, kind of an informational thing for parents right now about these different programs that we have, but it's more intensive, where it may last over the course of months, where they're really digging into, um, the causes of substance use. You know, what might be going on in a student's life? Um, what are some other supports, what are some alternatives to doing vaping or other substances? And really drilling down, having conversations with the parents, and really opening up that conversation for a level of support. I have one student who's getting that support right now, and they said to me the other day, they said, I really like you. And this is a student who's having some, some substance issues, uh, vaping is one of them. And she said, I was expecting her to tell me vaping was bad, don't do it, and then we move on, but they're really getting at goals and short-term goals and what. And to have the student tell me how important that was to them, and I don't think the student was just telling me that because that's what I wanted to hear. It was just more of a casual conversation about how things were going, and the student started to open up about that, so it was really cool. Uh, so we're putting things into place to address some of that. Mentioned something about orange passes and students feeling micromanaged, I can see that. Um, last year, the hallways were probably the worst, and the bathrooms were the worst that I have seen in like twelve years of being here. What are orange passes is allowing us to do is to track data, where are these times where it's happening? So, yeah, we've got a lot of really good kids who, they do what's expected of them all the time. But then we were having an even bigger population last year at scene, that was really, we, we were losing, I don't want to say losing control, but the issue was getting out of control, vaping being one of them. Um, this has allowed us to kind of monitor that, and especially with certain kids, we can kind of monitor that and hopefully address the issue before they become bigger. But you're right, putting both of those things at the beginning of the year makes for a really popular principal.
I think presenting it in the right way to the kids, like, this is why we're doing it.
Um, and last but not least, I just wanted to, uh, share a few things about the late start on, um, Thursday. Tell you everything that we did, but I can show you some pictures while I talk. And unfortunately, the pictures don't show up really big there. Uh, but here's what you would have seen at seven thirty in the morning. You want to talk about another popular, uh, principal decision is, hey, at seven thirty in the morning, grab a cup of coffee, because we're diving into data, and we're gonna talk about data, because that's what teachers want to do at seven thirty. But here's what you'll see, I asked them three questions. One was, what kind of data does your department collect? So it's different for special ed, it's different for health and P E, it's different for math, right? They all have different things, so they started talking about, oh, well, we collect this. So it could have been N W A's, it could have been I Ready, could have been classroom assessments, um, it could have been, um, informal assessments as students are leaving, we ask certain questions. So number one was getting out on, on the table, what are the different types of assessments that we're doing? Right, so here you see the, um, modern languages, uh, band, art, having conversations about data, right? Those are probably, that's probably the one department you're like, what do they really collect with that? Right, but they're starting to have these conversations. So number one was, what do you? So number one was, what do you collect? Then we came back together in the auditorium and we discussed what all the different departments were doing. Then I said, okay, now go back out and discuss what would you do with that data as a department? What are you currently doing or what could you do? So then they started, they went back out and they're having conversations about the different things that they use it. Examples are, you know, we use it to inform our instructional activities. It allows us to pull certain students that may be missing big concepts during focus time. We use data to review curriculum changes. We analyze the trends in what we're seeing in the data to make decisions for curriculum or for our classroom, right? So those are kind of the questions you would, or the answers you would expect the teachers to say. So then I said, okay, we came back in, we discussed it, what does all the departments do? Then we went back out. And if you look in the background, you can actually see some students sitting in the lobby. Because by the time we got back out, buses were starting to drop off kids, right? So the kids are out there while the teachers are having this conversation. And the cool thing is, kids were there and they were talking. And teachers were having this rich conversation about data without realizing that students were like on the other side of that window or just around the corner. Like, they were just engaged in this conversation. And at this point, you're probably talking closer to nine. But the last question I, I asked them was, now that you've talked about the data that you collect and you've talked about ways you use it as a department, we talked a little bit about how you could use it with students. How could you get students to be aware of where their data is? Kind of like Jason talked about changing the culture of test-taking. You know, so oftentimes we take tests and then we move on and we don't talk about it with the kids. We don't talk about, this is why you performed at a certain level. Get them to buy in. So the last part with them talking about, how could you, once you do one of these assessments, whether it's NWEA, iReady, a classroom assessment, how could you go over that so the kids understand where they're at? Our next step as we move on throughout this year is talking about, now that you understand that teacher-student understands that, how do they start setting goals individually with the students? So it's more on an individual basis. And then hopefully by the end of the year, students have set these goals. Now, when it comes time to take the assessment again, especially when it comes to NWEAs or iReads, they now have set a goal, they know what they're looking for and they can hopefully achieve at a, at a higher scale. So that's really kind of, this workshop was setting the foundation for our work as we go into this school year. And the fact that I still have smiling faces at nine o'clock after we talked about data for an hour and a half to start the day, it tells me there's, there's good things going on. Whereas again, and like Jason said, having this conversation at the end of the day, you're dealing with a lot of different things. The teachers just ran through their whole schedule, so they're exhausted and then they have to sit down and you're not going to have this rich of a conversation. And I think this is the last picture, but it just, Chris, as a former phys ed and health teacher, jumped in and was talking data with the health and phys ed teacher. Again, another area where you wouldn't think they're collecting a lot of data, but then you think about it, personal fitness and setting individual fitness goals and great conversations going on. But I'm thinking enough time, if anybody has any questions?
Sounds good.
Sounds like, oh, it was great. The first bonfire, I think I've, yes, since I started doing it, it's like.
I drove.
Wow, this is weird.
There were so many people there.
Jim and I talked, we have never had the bonfire rain out.
Oh, knock on wood.
And never knock on wood. Even if we wished for it to rain out some years, right? It's, it is, and it's put on by the parents or the kids. All I do is show up. Should I do that every day? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Well, to me, Michelle, she's not here, she's not online.
Okay.
Very. Actually, we have special ed, are you? Any special ed? Okay. All right.
I don't have a fancy slideshow, but, um... The high school is, the hot water heaters went through the new system, this propane-fired water heaters. That came online last week. So far, we're making hot water throughout the building, added supplies. And we haven't had much of a change. We're coming into the winter season, so I'm sure we're going to have a lot more going, a lot more things coming up that we're addressing. But right now, not on good weather, staying warm.
Yeah. Very good. Very good to hear, and the hot water's definitely been a good project to start off your, your time with us.
Yes.
Day one.
I'll be real brief, Chad and Jason basically, Chad and Chris rather, mentioned how great a week it was. It was a great homecoming week. The only other data I wanted to give you, I gave you the high school participation numbers last week, last meeting, today after the junior high, we have ninety students participating in ball sports. How many students? Hundred and eighty-two out of one eighty-two, so it's a tiny half the population playing in ball sports, so that's great. Any questions? Thank you.
Sounds good. Good participation rate. All right, technology, you don't have little heroes, you know? All right. Next up would be Amanda.
Twenty-one point nine percent of the school year has gone by and twenty-four point eight four percent of the budget has been accounted for if you remove encountered items, which is money just still accounted for but sitting there not actually paid out. Twenty-three point two percent has been, wow, interesting.
All right. Any, any questions? Pretty typical. All right, no questions, thank you very much. Next up is Peter.
I'm going to take a huge risk and get something off the cuff right now. Because it's what we ask strategists to do every single day. And we've implemented this program called the Regulated Classroom. And the idea behind the Regulated Classroom is that you take a pulse of your class that you're working with. You take a pulse of yourself. You ask yourself, do I need a connector? Do I need something to connect everybody? Do I need an activator? Do I need an activity that's going to activate everybody? Do I need a settler? Does everybody need to be settled? Or do I need some affirmation? Do I need to do something that's giving affirmation? I'm going to take a huge risk, I'm going to ask you to stand up for thirty seconds. So stand up, you don't have to dance, I just need to stand up. Stand up. Jason's doing it. I'm asking you to put your arms up just for a second. I'm asking you to do some twirls this way. Just thirty seconds.
He's got a long wingspan.
He's got a long wingspan, that's why I didn't bring him so long, because I didn't like the way they said that about my wingspan. Go the other way. Go the other way. All right. I want you to just stop for just a second. I want you to put your arms up, take a deep breath. Put your arms down, exhale. Arms up. Arms down. That's it, folks, that's it. That was a quick activity. And you'll see, the teachers are working these quick activities with students throughout the course of the year. It's doing different things with them, sensing what they need. I'm sensing that some of us were falling asleep a little bit. Don't be, it's been a long meeting, but we've been sitting for a long time. And that's what happens when you sit for a long time. So you need to do something like that. I want to jump on affirmations just for a second. Chad did an outstanding job of highlighting what's happened, Chris, Jim. I want to give some affirmations. That homecoming was one of the best days that I've seen this community celebrate and have in a long, long time. I went from event to event and saw the same people going from event to event and celebrating. And being there for our kids, parents, students. Chad mentioned Bella. That's a huge affirmation when you have a student who's able to stand up and earn her peers and sing and take that risk. She's great, but nevertheless, they were there accepting, applauding, cheering. That's huge.
It was one of the bravest things.
Then, then you keep going. Fire department's there.
Yeah.
Several of the trucks are there. Made it a point to go over and say thank you to the fire department that was there. They actually used that event to do a practice activity. But they were there for us, they were there making sure people were safe. Huge things to all of the staff, the faculty, the administration. It's a very long day. What they gave to make that happen. Countless hours, there's no question. A proud moment for the Winslow community, to say the least. To our parents, if any of you are listening out there tonight, we're honored to be working with your children. I truly mean that. Chad said, the kids are great. We're honored to be working with your kids. So I want to start off with that and then I'll jump right in with the next piece. Michelle is not here tonight. We wish her the best. Michelle's having surgery tomorrow. We hope it's, we hope it goes extremely well. It's, it's a knee situation, it could be relatively quick or it could be a longer, depending on what they find with their knee, but that's why she's not here. So we wish her the absolute best. I want to talk a little bit about the special education director's position and give you an update on that. As you know, we are in the process of seeking a special ed director. Our director's last day was last Friday. So we needed to put a plan in place because we haven't, we haven't found the person as of this moment. We have put a plan in, in place that we'll, that we will revisit in two weeks if we have to. And that plan includes reaching out to a former special ed director who used to work for us in AOS ninety-two. Her name is Ellen Whitcomb, she was with us for, for, throughout the AOS. Prior to the AOS time and during some of the AOS time. Another former director is Amy Benham, who's working part-time in Vassarboro. She was able to give us two days a week. Ellen was able to give us two days a week. And then we looked at one of our internal teachers, Storm Kelso, a speech language person. We looked at, could she give us a few hours every morning to kind of have the boots-on-the-ground piece and do some of that, some of that troubleshooting? Be the liaison for Ellen and for Amy. Ellen is going to focus on the elementary school, Amy will focus on junior high, high school. And just try to make that, that piece work for us as we transition. Having said that, we are very excited about the possibilities of tomorrow afternoon because the committee is going to convene, the interview committee. We do have a candidate that we are going to be interviewing tomorrow. So fingers crossed, we're very excited about that and we'll let you know how that all goes. The next piece that I just want to briefly mention is that the administrative team has been working on our safety plans, pulling our safety plans out, updating our safety plans, making sure the numbers are correct in those plans. I don't want to mention any names of other school districts, but many of you probably know that at least four districts have had already some threats to them. It's something that we need to always be prepared, be prepared for and have our plans updated. Michelle, this summer, she may have, might remember that she presented at the last meeting, that she attended a three-day conference this summer. One of the sessions that she went to was a session where we had the main emergency management rep was there at that session. She brought his card, gave me the card and said, hey, I went to this session. I reached out to, to the gentleman and he is, I asked him if he would come and present to the administrative team. He will be at our team meeting this coming Wednesday along with our local police to review our plans, I've already sent them our plans, to review our plans and tweak them and say, hey, this is what I see that looks really good. These are some areas that you could still maybe consider making some changes to. So that's going to happen this Wednesday. In front of you, you have a big black book. That big black book is the MSBA Main School Board Association handbook. And it's designed for school board members and main school superintendents. And it's light reading for you. It's some of the updated laws and, and information that you need to have as a school board member. So I would ask that when you have free time and you're looking for something to do, that you... The information in that book, of course, is covered when you do your school board orientation. And since we don't have new board members this year, this would kind of take place, you know, take, replace that. Next thing I want to bring to your attention is the fifty-first annual Fall Conference, Main School Board Conference. It's given board and superintendents, I will hand this out to you. The sessions are here, they're listed, it's scheduled to take place on October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. If this is something you'd like to attend, many, some of you have attended in the past, Joel usually attends this. If you'd like to attend, let us know, Amanda will register you for this particular conference. It's always very good, it's very informational.
Very informational. And you, as you can see each time slot, there's a number of clinics that you can choose from, so... And some of them are repeated at different times if you have conflicts over, during one time slot, happens at a couple of sessions. Amanda, you can tell me in front of both those.
Last but not least, our first policy meeting will be on October eighth, three fifteen. That will be posted, of course, and it will be held at, and I'm looking at Erica right now because... We didn't talk about, that's another one, it will be held at the central office. Never mind, scratch that idea. Winslow Central Office, as always, yep.
Also regarding this conference, yes, it's a two-day thing, but if you can make one of them, you know, most of it is on the first day, second day is a little shorter, I think. Yes, it's done sooner?
No.
No?
Not at all, thank you. It starts earlier on Friday.
It starts earlier on Friday, okay. Yeah, because I have... Yeah, I think they have a school board chair thing earlier that morning. I think that's what they're doing. But anyway, you can make one of them. You know, that, that's a plus. And I'll try to commit two days, so...
That's it. Oh, thank you. So we do have JMG, a new JMG person. Nicole Violet will be replacing Delaney Wood. And Delaney Wood was with us for not too long, she was with us just not long. She took, she took a different position and, but Nicole, Nicole Violet will be replacing her. And that's technically not our employee, it's a JMG employee, but I thought it's good for you to, to know that. She will be on board to work, work for the students.
And I see that she was in resignations because she was unentitled. Free?
Yes.
So we're going to cover that. Okay. All right. Very good. Next up is public comment. Are you here for public comment? Do I need to read my information?
Here to take it all in.
Okay, all right. Is anybody here for public comment? I was going to read the introduction so everybody knows what it is. I know you know what it is, but, but anyway, I will dispense with reading it, but... Excuse me, for anybody that's watching this online, the introduction to public comment and the public comment policy is on our website. So you can read those at your leisure. And just, everybody knows that they can also reach out to us anytime via email and get us their information, which oftentimes is actually more, works out better than public comment where you can, you've only got three minutes to present your point of view, so sometimes written is more precise. But, but anyway, so we'll call public comment closed, so we have nobody here for that. We have no old business and we have no new business. Oh, we have one under new business, Delegate Assembly Resolutions. If you have a chance to look at those, but they're pretty straightforward. We had a regional, Main School Board Association had a regional meeting last Monday, I think it was. We did a Zoom meeting. Maybe we'll get a couple of districts up to time and then go through the, how many districts we have. Eight districts, I think. And go through these, these are what the... These are what the resolutions committee from Main School Board Association had come up with for proposed changes or additions or deletions. And so we discuss those at our regional meeting. The other regions will discuss them as well. I don't think they've got through all those yet. And they will be coming out with a final document that'll go to the delegate assembly that happens on the Saturday, the nineteenth. So generally, these went pretty well. There was going to be, there'll probably be a little bit of wordsmithing. They'll come out of the different sessions. And we had some things that we talked about. They'll take that in under advice with other district meetings and they'll draft a final document to take to the delegate assembly. And it could still be amended there. But they try to do some of that work in ahead so that the delegate assembly does not go on all day, which it has on occasion, all day. So. So anyway, I don't know if anybody had any particular thoughts on any of these that they wanted to share. I think they're reasonably straightforward. A lot of the ones that were struck were because either things have already happened or they consolidated them into some other resolutions in many cases. So it's what a lot of that is about.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm looking at page three. Two alpha, three echo, state assessment.
Yes.
What was changed? Because I can see that state assessment highlighted, obviously, proposed amended twenty-twenty-four. What was changed in there?
Well, as you can see, there was, there was a four point one-two. And I think they, I think that's the biggest part of it. I think they took some of, I don't know if they took some of this two A, three E. I don't know if they did in that case. But they, they took four point one-two, for example, and
Okay.
Basically redid it. I mean, we all know that both of us have been doing this for a while and the state testing has changed numerous occasions.
I like the, I like the maintained consistent assessment for no less than five years to establish an actual workable benchmark where more than one year. And including social studies and civics and testing because that generally gets left out.
Left out, you're right. Yeah, so it's good. I mean, because, yeah, they've changed the, the state tests.
So it's just.
Well, and I like that they also said to spend a good deal of time vetting vendors before they decide.
Sometimes they're not so good at that, right? Granted, these are resolutions and the recommendations of what the state should be doing. And this is what the association stands behind, but that doesn't mean they won't do what they want to do. We're just trying to point them in the, in the direction we think is best. So. So anyway, I think that's much yet. I don't know if anybody else has anything, any other thoughts on that? I will also mention, I happen to be on the ballot for the Main School Board Association for at-large director position. I don't know if it's contested or not. I think oftentimes they have as many candidates as they have seats, so contested, but. So anyway, that was a two-year position and my hat's in the ring for it, so. Because I needed one.
I was going to say, we have so much time, right?
Well, ultimately, I'm going to burn my vacation time, right?
It's nice to have a member.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Having done a number of these regional meetings, I've gotten, you know, sorry, seen all the same faces, so it's good. So it kind of makes sense to. You know, and obviously, experience is helpful. And although they have some people that have less experience, but it brings in perspectives as well. So it's a good combination. So. Anyway. All right. So I guess that's that. Voting on appointments. We have a number of appointments. And if there is not an objection, I would entertain a motion to take them as a lot.
So move.
So move. I see, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, right there. All right. Any discussion? All right. So all in favor of taking the board of appointments as a lot?
Oh, yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the lot of appointments as presented?
So move.
Okay. Have a motion, we have a second. End of session. All right. All of us all in favor of approving the lot of appointments. It is unanimous. All right. Very good. Kind of funny to see names on here that I coached them for a little bit.
Feel a little.
Yeah. Resignations, we do have a few resignations, some of which were people just changing positions. Mary Beth has not done a field hockey coach that she was doing JV in addition to varsity, so. And we have a JV field hockey coach that was on the previous list we just voted.
Right, yeah.
And she can do single duty. All right, so Peter already accepted those resignations anyway. Other business? I don't think we have any other business unless anybody has any. Okay. So executive sessions, we have no actionable things on this executive session, right? No, okay. Or do we? Maybe. Maybe. Okay. All right. Well. We're going to keep.
No, I don't think you should keep.
Okay. So. So we're going to enter, we'd be looking for a motion, but I guess Earl's really good with this. Well, let Earl do it though. Now there's three of them, he's got to read three of them.
Motion to go into executive session. One, MRSA, section four oh five six A, employment of official appointees, employees retire and return. One, MSRA, MRSA, four oh five six A, employment of official appointees, employees, special ed director. And one, MRSA, section four oh five six echo, legal rights and duties of school unit transfer agreement.
Do we have a motion to that effect? Or I guess that was really a motion. So do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All right. All in favor of going into executive session? All right. So very good. So those who aren't involved in the executive session, yes, leave. Our next meeting is October twenty-eighth. For those who aren't around to hear that after our meeting, six o'clock right here.